Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 20th, 28th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda first. At 7:00, we have citizens input. We already have a citizen here, ready to go. At 7:05, we got the Foxborough Commission on Disability. 7:15, the Race Amity Day Proclamation. 7:25, Public Hearing, Craft, Sports and Entertainment, LLC, Luke Bryan Sunset Repeat Tour. Then we have Public Hearing, Craft, Sports and Entertainment, LLC, Dead and Company 2019 Tour. Then we have the Craft, Sports and Entertainment, LLC, George Strait 2019. Then we're gonna have Craft, Sports and Entertainment, LLC, Mad Decent Music Festival. Then we have a public -- A little different one now. Public Hearing, NPS LLC, and Relevant Sports for the International Champions Cup. Public Hearing, Wormtown Brewery, LLC, doing business as the Wormtown Brewery. And cable television advisory committee discussion and presentation. Big Night Venues, Foxborough, LLC, doing business as the Scorpion Bar in Mexican Cantina. The selectmen will discuss the parking regulations, the commercial parking regulations. We'll reappoint the interim finance director and town accountant. Then selectmen's update, town managers' update, assistant town managers' update, and then a few action items. Chris, as outgoing chair, why don't you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to all that would stand one nation under our law, indivisible,天地, just for all.
Alrighty. Anyone for citizens input?
I'm here.
Yeah.
My name is Ron Rogers, and I'm here about the subject, Foxborough Display of the U.S. Flag. Now, I'm gonna read this. I have a second-grade reading level, so you people are all gonna have to suffer through this. But we'll get it done, and I'll be done and gone. And then we'll figure out what we're gonna do afterwards. "The purpose in writing this letter is to express our deep concern over flying their Patriots' logo under the American flag in the Foxborough Common. We represent a sizable growing number of veterans, military veterans here in Foxborough and the greater Foxborough area. Let us first say we love Foxborough, the surrounding area, and the New England Patriots. It is very gratifying to hear news media personnel, sportscasters talking about what's going down in Foxborough and the Patriots. That being said, there has been a growing concern in discussion surrounding the display of the Patriots' logo under the American flag here in the Town Common. We deeply love and honor the American flag and all it stands for. We fought and suffered for it as veterans. Our Common was converted to a multipurpose memorial park in 1984. It was dedicated by the Korea-Vietnam Memorial Committee and others. The memorial pays homage to the Korean, Vietnam, Lebanon, Grenada, Panama, and the Persian Gulf efforts. Got underway in 2017 to design and create a memorial for those who suffered and sacrificed in Iraq and Afghanistan, and that's been done." Right there, for all to see, is a pledge, a plaque that reads, "In memory of all who served," with the shield of the American Legion and VFW at the bottom, "Dedicated Memorial Day 1984." On the other side is an emblem of a prisoner of war, missing in action sign. Also, by the monument is a flagpole with a memorial plaque on it, saying that the new flag was dedicated to the people of Foxborough, May 29, 1989, by Foxborough Troop 32, Boy Scouts of America, with the list of donors. So you can see that the park has taken on an even more special meaning over the last few decades. The town, townspeople, donors, and even the Boy Scouts have spent their own time and money to make it special. We can appreciate the value of the relationship between the town of Foxborough and the New England Patriots Organization. We certainly understand the bond between the town and the Patriots Organization. We are very good for each other. However, we feel strongly that the town has shown disrespect to the flag, our veterans, first responders, and anyone that honors the values that this great country stands for. In the United States Flag Code, Section 8, Paragraph I, it states in part, "Advertising signs shall not be fastened to the shaft or landing from which a U.S. flag is flown." We want and expect that the flag is respected at all times. We would like to see the Town Common Memorial Flagpole fly only the American flag in respect for all memorialized below it. We suggest that the flagpole, we suggest that another flagpole be erected at the Town Hall, so we can fly the Boy Scouts and the Patriots' logo. It would allow us to show our pride for the relationship between our friends and New England Patriots without disrespecting the American flag on the common." Ron Rogers, thank you very much, people. And that's it.
Thank you, Ron.
I would like to say a little bit more. The cost would not be to the town. We could do this. You have plenty of people that have done this here and raised money for a new flagpole. It would just show our respect separately from the veterans and the Patriots, and we could get back to watching football. Because right now, we don't watch football. I don't. And there's other people that don't, too. So...
Thank you, Ron.
That's my story, and I think, I don't know how to take this any further. Do we go to a discussion, or you?
Well, what we probably should do is discuss it, maybe bring it up as an agenda item.
Okay, that would be great. You'll contact me, then?
We'll contact you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Or make sure you leave your number with Bill.
He's got it.
(Laughter).
(Laughter).
Anybody here that didn't get a copy of this letter? Is there anybody here?
It's in our board packet.
Everybody's got a copy of it? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for your service, Ron. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ron.
Have fun.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Margaret Nash, 227 Central Street in Foxborough, and I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'd like to present some pages of signatures from the residents from all over Foxborough regarding the firehouse proposal that have been being discussed in the paper over the last few months. And the two proposals that we have before us are significantly different in their density and impact size in fitting with the surrounding area and the town. And if I might, I'd like to read the letter and give you the signatures of the people, approximately 350 people we were able to talk to over the weekend, and to try to urge you to consider those issues of density and parking and traffic congestion in the center of town. Thank you. "To the Foxborough Board of Selectmen regarding the proposals for multi-use development for the Foxborough Firehouse. We, the undersigned Foxborough residents, respectfully urge the Board of Selectmen to award the bid for the development of the above-mentioned property to the Gibson Corner Realty Trust because we feel that the scale and density of their proposal will best suit the character and atmosphere of our treasured Town Center and Common. A taller, larger building will obliterate the view of Bethany Church Steeple, perhaps our oldest town landmark, as people enter from the south, and will tower over all existing business and residential buildings for blocks. Furthermore, the quadrupled number of dwelling units would have an irrevocable negative effect on that particular corner, with very little compensatory benefits. Another multi-use, high-development is proposed along Wall Street and other parts of town, still considered the center of town, but much less negative visual impact and more versatility to absorb than needed for parking and other necessary infrastructure such as traffic corridors, trash collection areas, so forth. The Gibson proposal seems to include the advantage of a small, nicely landscaped parking area at the Rock Hill Market corner to fully accommodate the new restaurant and residential users, and perhaps a small surplus for other nearby venues, without impacting the other limited municipal parking we have in the center of town. This plan, only ground-level usage in the rear of the parcel, also serves to create, to increase the vertical space directly abutting the residential areas, facilitate the airflow, and mitigate the noise and congestion that are certain to occur with such increased activity around the corner. The bid for the Gibson proposal is lower than the others, and some might be tempted to think that that is a deciding factor, but we disagree. There is an intangible value to preserving the beauty and character of our wonderful small town, New England. Please consider these factors and the long-term outcome in your decision, and we thank you very much."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Yes, sir.
Hi. I'm Peter Ryan. I live at 107 South Street. Lived here for 40 years or so, and I'll be brief. When I was at town meeting two weeks ago, and then read of the subsequent comments at last week's selectmen's meeting, and I was very disappointed at how what happened at town meeting was described, including by town employees and management. What was said about pay and personnel by the advisory board members and by citizens that get up to speak was not personal. It wasn't personal at all. It was about managing headcount and payroll for the town, and taking a long-term view at the ongoing growth we've had at Town Hall and headcount and payroll. And the advisory board was very clear about the impact that the growth in this area has for the pension obligations that they commit the town to for a very long time. And pension obligations are a huge issue in municipal government everywhere in this country. It's a very real challenge, well-recognized what's coming down the road. And I would imagine that every professional city or town, mayor, or manager, or team, is well-aware of that. That's a fundamental issue, so it's very disingenuous to say that this is personal. I heard everything that was said. It wasn't personal. The advisory committee focused on the growing pension obligations and on the implications for the future health of the town and for everyone that lives here and pays taxes here. They said that clearly, consistently, rationally, and to characterize it as something else is a disservice to the town. I would also ask that the selectmen, in the future, in performance reviews, ask clear questions about what's being done to control payroll and pension costs, and that the selectmen set an objective of controlling them, and rate the town manager, whoever that may be, on how he or she is doing with that. Very briefly, just a related point is about the advisory board and their service. I've never served in a town board or committee, but my spouse has. I know lots of friends and neighbors who have taken on that civic duty, including all of you and all the selectmen who've served. And it's an arduous job. I'm sure the calls, being stopped at the grocery store, everyone wants your ear, everyone has an opinion. It's fine, but this is all about volunteer work for the town. And in the case of the advisory board, for the 40 years I've lived here, they've been an invaluable asset. And disparage them and misrepresent what they're doing and saying is wrong. I don't know any of the current members, but from what I've heard them say, and looking at their qualifications and experience, they are a real asset to the town at no cost. And if we impugn these people and talk about their motives, then we're simply costing the town a very valuable asset. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am? You have to, yeah, the speaker, that doesn't work.
Pat Stevens, 63 Mechanic Street. I just wanted to let you know I met with Roger and Chris and Scott Austin at the police station about the area, did I say 63 Mechanic? So they're gonna at least work on putting up a sign, because there's no sign, speed limit sign, from center down till you get to the art school. And then there's some other things in the works that we're going to discuss. So I just wanted to let you know, thank you.
No, thank you for the opinion.
Also, in talking to other people around town, women on Carpenter Street, men on North High Street, I don't think I'm gonna be finished with talking about lowering the speed limit. It's up to you. Selectmen in the town, make the decisions now. Just so you know, I'm not gonna go away. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I wanna say, yesterday was beautiful. That Memorial Day celebration that you put together was wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens input?
Alright, great.
Foxborough Commission on Disability.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sue Collins, and I'm the chair of the Foxborough Commission on Disability. And each year, the commission gives our Above and Beyond Award to recognize special people who make a positive difference in the lives of people with disabilities. We give one award to business and one to an individual. And we thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to make this award presentation at this meeting. It's fitting that we recognize these citizens who impact our community in such a beneficial way at a meeting of those whose intention or whose mission is to promote a high quality of life for every resident in our town. So we're very pleased to have our state legislators for the presentation. State Senator Paul Feeney and State Representative Jay Barrows will make their presentations after I speak. So this year's winners for the individual award is the Foxborough Police Detective Patrick Morrison. And Detective Morrison spearheaded a campaign to sell autism awareness patches, with the proceeds going to a local agency that provides support to individuals with disabilities and their families. Morrison is the head of the Foxborough Police Relief Association, a charitable entity of the local police department, and he chose autism patches as a theme after being approached by a local family of a child with autism spectrum disorder. He and his fellow officers raised $3,000 selling the patches during the month of April, which is designated as Autism Awareness Month. The Foxborough Relief Association donated the money to the Kennedy Donovan Center in Foxborough, an agency that provides a range of therapeutic services to individuals with disabilities. They serve infants through adults, and they were thrilled to receive this gift. And as a matter of fact, my daughter went through the Kennedy Donovan Early Intervention Program, and it helped her greatly. Detective Morrison represents the qualities and philosophy for the Foxborough Commission on Disabilities Above and Beyond Award, and he became aware of a need, and he set out to do something about it. So it's my pleasure and honor to present Detective Patrick Morrison with our Above and Beyond Award. Thank you very much. (Applause). By the way, this is Margaret Chason. She's my right-hand gal. She's the vice chair for the Commission on Disability. Our second award goes to the business, Foxborough Fit Factory Gym, and James Barbosa is the manager. The Fit Factory works in partnership with a state-funded vocational day program for adults with disabilities. Individuals from the program rotate through an internship at the Fit Factory, and they learn job skills, have the opportunity to interact with the community at large. The Fit Factory works with the Attleboro Enterprises, an agency contracted by the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services to provide day habilitation, life skills training, and employment opportunities to adults with intellectual disabilities. Individuals from Foxborough Enterprise volunteer at the Fit Factory for a period of up to six months. During this time, they learn job skills, work on performing tasks independently, and they gain real-world experience to help prepare them for a rich, full life. The Fit Factory is a shining example to other local businesses of a true community employer. They make a point of offering employment to those whom other businesses may overlook, and for this, the Disability Commission commends them. The Commission works to improve the lives of those with disabilities, and we're proud to have a local business that does the same. So it's my honor and privilege to present the Fit Factory with our Above and Beyond Award. (Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's wonderful tonight to be here with Representative Barrows to recognize those that go above and beyond. I want to thank the commission, and Margaret specifically, for reaching out and inviting us here tonight. It's so important, you know, Foxborough, there is certainly no shortage of people that go above and beyond, but there are those from time to time that rise above everyone else, and certainly, the two individuals, or the entity and the individual that we recognized tonight are no exceptions. So with that, Representative Barrows and I have a citation. We'll start with you, Detective, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts State Legislature offers its sincerest congratulations to Detective Patrick Morrison in recognition of receiving the Above and Beyond Award for your leadership in fundraising to support families of children with disabilities. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 28th day of May, signed by Speaker Robert A. DeLeo, authored by State Representative F. J. Barrows, and State Senator Paul Feeney. Congratulations and thank you.
(Applause). We go over to this corner of the room. I am really proud of you, James, and all that you've done. I've known James since he was about this big. He's grown up to be a tremendous manager and community leader. And so this, too, is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The legislature, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Foxborough's Fit Factory Gym in recognition of receiving the Above and Beyond Award for your partnership with the state-funded Vocational Day Program for adults with disabilities. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors, given today the 28th of May, and signed by Robert A. DeLeo, our speaker, Mr. truly Jay Barrows, and Senator Paul Feeney. And I just want to say, Fit Factory got here about a year ago, maybe? Has it been 14 months, maybe?
About a year and six months.
(Laughter). 18 months. And have really worked in the communities of Mansfield and Foxborough and the surrounding area, and have had an impact, not only in changing those without disabilities, but working with Attleboro Enterprises, which is a tremendous amount of people that need that help. And so we're very fortunate that you guys have taken a look at that and have done something about it, and we want to thank you for recognizing them and knowing what's going on in the community, and congratulations to you as well. So it just makes our whole area stronger, better, and in good shape for the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause). Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
So next on the agenda is the Race Amity Day Proclamation. So I'll read the proclamation from the town of Foxborough in a second. Whereas in 2015, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature established that annually the second Sunday of June be Race Amity Day, and whereas the Act, House 2745, Chapter 163 of Acts of 2015, state the following. "Race Amity Day shall recognize that the people of the Commonwealth are its greatest asset. To recognize that the Commonwealth is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethnic, multiracial citizens, and to encourage friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness as the commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the Commonwealth by joining with communities across the United States to reflect on the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation, while reaching out with a spirit of amity toward one another annually and recommending that the day be observed in an appropriate manner by the people. Whereas Race Amity Day is a day for all Americans to reflect and affirm the dignity of the diverse racial, cultural, and religious backgrounds of the human mosaic that constitutes the United States of America. Whereas the town of Foxborough shall act in accordance with and emulate the words of this Act and of this event. And whereas the town of Foxborough shall designate the second Sunday in June as Race Amity Day. And whereas the citizens of Foxborough should participate in all activities related to Race Amity Day. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, officially proclaim June 9, 2019, as Race Amity Day. In witness thereof, we have set our hand and caused the seal of the town of Foxborough to be affixed on this 28th day of May in the year of 2019." The Board of Selectmen. Thank you. Next on the agenda, got a few public hearings. First one, our newly-appointed clerk will read our public hearing.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, is Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, code of the town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing, hearings, on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., to review the applications submitted by the Craft, Sports, and Entertainment, LLC as follows. Luke Bryan Sunset Repeat Tour at 7:25. The Dead and Company 2019 Tour at 7:40 p.m. and George Strait 2019 at 7:55. These events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Applications for all events are on file at the office of the Selectmen. All parties... to be affixed on this 28th day of May in the year of 2019. The Board of Selectmen. Thank you. Next on the agenda, got a few public hearings. First one, our newly appointed clerk will read our public hearing.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing, hearings, on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., to review the applications submitted by the Kraft Sports and Entertainment LLC as follows. Luke Bryan Sunset Repeat Tour at 7:25, The Dead &amp; Company 2019 Tour at 7:40 p.m., and George Strait 2019 at 7:55. These events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Applications for all events are on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All parties, interested parties, are welcome to attend.
Hi, Ron. Jesse Knowsitt, Gillette Stadium, Kraft Sports and Entertainment.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
So how they were posted, we were able to do the first three together.
Sure. Okay. So I'll just, do you want me to just kind of briefly run through the details of the three in chronological order? Does that make sense?
Be great.
So the first one being Luke Bryan with Cole Swindell, Brett Young, and John Langston. It's a stop on the Sunset Repeat Tour. You may remember, we've had Luke Bryan at the stadium before. We had him in 2014, and then again in 2016 with similar style events. Strong opener with, I'm sorry, strong headliner with three support acts. So this is sort of our new country act for the summer. Kenny Chesney's not touring. We'll talk about George Strait in a few minutes, but that's a very different sort of country demo. So this will be that country, younger country, new country event for the summer. And this year, it's going to be on a Friday. It starts our summer concert season on June 21st. So being on a Friday, it definitely helps with some of the issues that we can see with this kind of event and with this demographic. So the requested start time is 5:00 p.m., and then lots at 1:00 and gates at 3:00. That's always a conversation that we have with public safety, and then we make the decision on lots and gates much closer to the actual event day, but the placeholders are those two times. It'll be a full stadium event, although we don't think it'll be a full sellout. There's a small GA section. Tickets start at $40 and go to $126. We anticipate between like 42,000 and 45,000 people. It's a KSC production, so all of the marketing and production is being done in-house, and then all of the staging and production is being done through Jackie Dotley. So Jackie Dotley is Al Dotley's daughter, and Al has been our production person for as long as we've had the building. So not much different this year than what we've seen with Luke in the previous two times. Want to go right to the next one? Or do you want to, how do you want to do this? Do you want to discuss this one first, or do you want me to roll right into the next?
Yeah, we'll do one, we'll do this one first.
Okay.
Yeah. Open public hearing. Anybody have any questions? Board?
No. I went to the last Luke Bryan concert, it was fine. No issues.
Yeah, everything seems like it's in order.
Okay. All right. Move on to the next.
Mr. Chairman, we just want to get the report from the Stadium Advisory Committee.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Keep me in line.
Thank you. We reviewed it, and again, where it's a Friday night, felt that it, you know, was much better in terms of lessening the impact of starting at 5:00 and having it be an all-day potential Saturday fest beforehand. We didn't see any issues. Police and fire didn't see anything overwhelming that would create it. It is a Friday night, which, one of the things that is, seems to be happening is there, the impact of traffic and increased traffic on weekdays is, but they have, they will have the contra lane set up, and we'll anticipate it, but it'll be pretty busy. The one thing that we heard that, and I took as, you know, potentially heartening, is the 9/11, 911 dispatch for southeastern Mass starts, it actually starts just after this. But they introduced, the police introduced, Lieutenant Grace introduced the new coordinator. And I think it'll be a good, a great enhancement for the town in terms of the added resources that it provides to the town if and as they're needed to draw on. And secondly, they brought up the, there is the potential to be able to affect GPS so that there would be a, they could block out certain, and I'm not sure exactly, but when they, when they brought it up, I was really impressed that this can be something that can really help the towns' non, you know, major highways that could get people to not, again, use like a Waze or GPS, or not have ways communicate that the best way to do it is to come down a street that's, you know, just going to plug everything up more. So I was encouraged with that. We recommend unanimously that you approve it.
Thank you. Good. We'll move on to the next one.
Great. So the following day, on Saturday, June 22, we'll be having Dead &amp; Co. featuring John Mayer at the stadium. This summer has been a slow summer from a touring perspective. A lot of the heavy hitters that we typically see out haven't gone out. So part of trying to keep the building open and vibrant and continuing to sort of establish ourselves within the concert promoting world, we wanted to, we brought both Luke Bryan and Dead &amp; Co. were two kind of acts that might not have been full stadium acts on their own, but in being able to share a lot of production and staging elements, we kind of were able to make it work financially. So we haven't had Dead &amp; Co. at the stadium in its modern history. It has been at the Xfinity Center in Mansfield, it has been at Fenway Park. So there's, they've established themselves certainly within the market as this sort of new iteration of the band, but it's certainly a very different band now than was at Foxborough Stadium in the 80s. So John Mayer is, most of you are probably familiar with him. He sort of has taken that Jerry Garcia role, and then the remaining living band members also play. It's, there's no opener, there's no sponsors, there's sort of no frills. It's just called the Summer 2019 Tour, and it kicks off on this Saturday. And so they've got a couple of dates before us, which is always nice. It's nice to not be the first stop on a tour, although at this point, I'm pretty sure these guys are a well-oiled machine. The start time is 7:00 p.m., so backing that out with standard timing, that would be lots of 3:00 p.m. and gates of 5:00 p.m. And again, we'll work with public safety to make sure that we find a lot and gate time that works for all of us safely. We are the promoter, and again, it's Jackie Dotley doing the production. The only thing different for, from the show versus Luke Bryan the night before is that there's no 300 level in use. So whereas Luke Bryan won't be a full, full sellout, but we will have the entire building open. For this show, we made the decision to close the 300 level. So we'll be hopefully between, you know, 30,000 and 40,000 people, but it'll all be lower bowl, clubs, 200 levels in the field. The field for this show is all GA. Tickets start at $39 and go up to 150.
Okay. End of public hearing. Anybody have any questions? Board? Nope.
Saw no issues with it?
Okay. Great.
We recommend for approval.
And last one, Jess.
George Strait with Blake Shelton, Cody Johnson, and Caitlin Smith. So we did have George Strait at the stadium in 2014. We're requesting August 17. If you remember, when we had him in 2014, it was his Cowboy Rides Away Tour, so it was a really significant tour for him. It was his last tour. He's now doing a couple of standalone dates. He just did one down at Atlanta that we went down to to just advance and sort of check out. He's doing another one in Ohio, and then he's doing our date. So it's pretty significant. He's just, these are very select dates. He's got some, he's got a residency in Vegas as well. So it's, it speaks again to the relationship that we've established with a lot of these tours and with these management teams. George Strait shares a management team with Kenny Chesney, who shares a management team with Taylor Swift and Ed Sheeran. So it was, it was exciting for us to get this date. It's, in being that it is a unique date and it's standalone, the ticket price has certainly reflect that. So it's, it's an expensive night out for the fans that are coming to this show. The start time is 5:00 p.m., so same exact, actually, start time profile as Luke Bryan. Lots at 1:00, gates at 3:00, to be determined with public safety. We are the promoter. It's Kraft Sports and Entertainment. We're using Jackie Dotley on all of our production. There's no GA for this show. Not surprisingly, everything is reserved and seated. We do anticipate a sellout, so between 50,000 and 55,000. Tickets started at 39 and go up to 399. We know that this is a much older crowd, that this is a much more mature crowd than what we typically see towards the end of August. It's nice that Blake Shelton is more of a co-headliner than an opening act because we feel like that'll help sort of stagger the in. We'll have a decent amount of people that are coming into the building for the first two, but definitely for Blake Shelton, and then also obviously for George Strait, which is nice when it helps with the entry profile like that. That's about it.
Again, anything? Public hearing, anybody? Flight?
What's the crowd estimated to be for this show? I didn't catch it.
Between 50,000 and 55,000. So a full stadium show.
Will that be perhaps the biggest one for the season in terms of attendance?
I think close. It'll probably tie with Rolling Stones, which we haven't actually been before yet because of the date shifts and all that good stuff, but we'll probably see similar attendance for those two, and similar demographic as well.
Okay, thank you.
The only comment I had, Jess, I don't remember what concert it was last year, but you know when we kind of wait to determine the parking lot and gate times? When nothing's said, there's a lot of kind of speculation and rumors that start to come about. So maybe like, you know, and you may have already done this, but you know, lot and gate times to be determined so that people aren't searching for it, and kind of stuff starts to pop up when there's nothing out there.
So you mean like preemptively communicate that?
Yeah, that maybe it's not determined yet. I feel like it was the country show last year that it was, you know, maybe a week or two before, and there was a lot of people like, you know, maybe taking the afternoon off of work and kind of chomping to know what time gates were open. And I just remember kind of hearing and seeing a lot of stuff with people, like we knew the gates weren't opening that early, but people may be starting to head over, so, you know, we don't have a decision, maybe communicating that so that people aren't trying to look for it and can't find it somewhere.
Yeah, that's simple enough. I mean, that's, that's an easy fix, is just sort of updating on our website.
You guys may have done it. I didn't go and look at it. I just kind of remember.
Looks like, especially with the George one, I have it open. I mean, it says parking lot opens at 1:00, gates open at 3:00, and I think I saw it on the other two.
Well, it always says that, but then it's kind of to be tweaked with public.
Yeah.
So it won't be communicated publicly to like people in other towns or, you know, that aren't falling at this level.
Mm-hmm. And it can be, it's that sort of a holdover from previous years, really more from like 2007, '08, '09. It's probably not as applicable now, thankfully, but we can definitely, we can put to be determined like on all of our forward-facing media. We can do that on our social and certainly do that on our website, and then give people a deadline of, you know, this, you'll know 48 hours in advance. And then once we do hit that 48-hour window between 72 and 48 hours is when we do send out that email to everybody saying, okay, this is it, lots, gates, which you can bring in, which you can't bring in, all that. But I understand your point that it would be nice to have something at least a little bit farther in advance for people that are making plans to come down.
Yeah, like I remember a lot of kind of chatter when there was nothing, and I don't remember which concert it was, if it was the Jay-Z, one of the country ones, like one of them, you know, when there's nothing out there like the week before and people kind of starting to think about it, they start to like, all right, what is it? What is it?
Yeah, when there's an information void, they'll fill it. Yeah, I understand.
I think the police are the ones that really are the ones that dictated that, right? That, you know, depend, they don't want to have a hard, because they were thinking it would be, I don't know.
It could, yeah, I think, I think that was kind of.
Because it isn't as much of an issue now.
Don't want it communicated, okay.
So I think to your, your point.
Yeah, that's right. It could go both ways, you know? Just an observation.
And they want the option, the option to open it early if it's a nightmare traffic-wise, too.
Yeah. Yeah. But we can say, we can simply say, don't know now, but we'll, you know, we'll let you know, you will know 48 hours in advance or 36.
And Stadium Advisory, oh, any other questions? And Stadium Advisory?
Yeah, no, I just, I forgot to mention, we have members that'll be present for all event, all these three concert events to man the hotline for noise and any other complaints that we then bring forward.
Okay. All right. Move to closed public hearing. Hold on, I guess you got to say it. I'll take it. This training wheel thing is going to be challenging.
It comes off quick.
Yeah. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Close? None. Good. And then, next motion? Yes. The next public hearing? No, move to approve these three. That usually is a, a nine or two. Okay, let me go back.
It's in your agenda.
Should be motion right there. Motion to approve Gillette Stadium event application. No, that's for the next one. I'm sorry. Let me go back.
You were close to that, to say Luke Bryan, Dead &amp; Company, and George Strait.
Okay. Motion to approve Gillette Stadium event application for George Strait.
Luke Bryan.
Luke Bryan. Dead &amp; Company Tour.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Close? Awesome. All right, now we go to the next public hearing. Chief, the, yeah.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2019, beginning at 8:25 p.m. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC and promoter Relevant Sports for the International Champions Cup. The event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Okay, so we skipped one.
Okay, so we'll start, start with Champions Cup?
Sure.
Perfect. So the Champions Cup, this is the third time we've hosted, I think, I believe in the last 10 years. This year, we're requesting Saturday, July 28, and the two teams will be Benfica and AC Milan. The start time of the match is 3:00 p.m. We're requesting gates at 1:00 and lots at 11:00, again, in concert with public safety. This event will not have a 300 level in use as of right now. Ticket sales don't indicate that it'll be much more than 40,000, so you'll see lower bowl of the stadium, both clubs, and then both 200-level mezzanines. We've had the, this event before. It's nice. Relevant produces a fantastic event. They bring this to a couple different stadiums, but it's not a given that they come to Gillette Stadium, so for us to land this is pretty special. It's a true international friendly, so to that end, it actually brings a nice crowd because it's the opportunity to experience top-tier international soccer, but it doesn't have any standings on the franchises as it pertains to sort of the European League. And for those reasons, there's a level of competition, or there's a level of energy or excitement in the building that's a little bit more tempered, which is nice. So you do see a lot of families at this event. The daytime hours make it much more appealing for families with young kids, and then it does bring in a significant international crowd, and especially with a Portuguese team and an Italian team, we're well-represented in this region, so we do see a good international crowd along with that. We're excited to have it again this year.
Great. Anyone from the public? Anything from, anyone from the board?
I think these are, these are great events to have, bring different, different, different aspect to the community. It can be well-received.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on something George had mentioned earlier. I noticed through all of these various applications, I kind of read the State of Advisory Committee's recommendation always first, and then everything else is, you know, and it's good to see that Rob Verdone has added now to all of these. He definitely, like George had said, he'll be a great asset to any international stuff or larger-scale event, so it's good to see that.
The only thing I bring up, sort of maybe pointed at you, Bill, is, you know, the last soccer thing we had, what, a couple of weeks ago? I don't know why they, they sometimes close Beach Street and they sometimes don't for traffic. We had an issue at the last soccer match with Beach Street being open. Maybe we should check and see why that happens and maybe make sure we close off Beach Street again for this event?
I'll have to defer to the chief on that particular action, but I know that there's been quite a bit of construction on that road for the past several months. I know that they were finishing up on the last lateral connection.
uh, for the past several months. Uh, I know that they were finishing up on the, the last lateral connection to, to homes on that street, uh, earlier today, actually. So, they'll be getting ready to do full-depth reconstruction on that road over the next, uh, next couple of months. So, that, that in itself could slow traffic down quite a bit, um, just by the nature of the construction. But, uh, I'll certainly inquire to, to the police department as to, um, and to make sure that's properly managed.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, if I could, uh, with Justice's help, speak to that. If yet, we had, uh, a resident come to our last meeting, and he, uh, was introduced to us via, through the, uh, Selectmen's Office, uh, town manager, that, a complaint that he lives on Beach Street and it was gridlocked that Wednesday night. And, um, the police were involved, the police department was very helpful in bringing together what, what happened. And Jess was very helpful in terms of getting to the bottom of what happened. And, um, it, it, in general, what happened was, it was a bigger event than they anticipated. There's usually a contra lane on major, you know, like if, once it approaches twenty thousand people.
A little higher than that, but yeah.
But, and even now, it's changing in terms of the numbers because of the fact that, uh, it's rush hour. You know, so if it's a weekday night event and it was a, uh...
It was a Wednesday evening, yeah.
Right, and it was a special match, right? They were playing, it wasn't the Rebs playing another team, which would, in the spring, have had a, a attendee number lower than the threshold. They didn't have the contra lane. They didn't set up the right on, uh, uh, North Street. It just, and then all of a sudden, things imploded, you know, and that, that was the feedback that we received.
Yeah.
I think, uh, the police learned from it. The, the police were well-represented at our meeting and, you know, conferred, you know, concurred that it was like, oh, you know, it, it, it got by them and the changing dynamics of what's happening with traffic on Route One. You know, kind of mandate now that it's a earlier or, or lower attendee threshold, that these new, uh, kind of, uh, things. And I, and I just speak to what came out of it.
Oh, it's great to hear that, that it was brought up.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time.
That was great.
Yeah, as soon, so it, it was a Wednesday evening match and it was sort of, there were a, a whole series of sort of failures, quite honestly. Um, you know, certainly on our part. Um, and when an event, when something like that happens during an event, it's, it's never what we want. The last thing we want is the community to be taxed like that, our neighbors, truly our closest neighbors, um, to be inconvenienced on that level. So, with, you know, by Thursday morning, we had already started to hear that there were, there were some complaints and that there were some issues. And there were, I mean, dozens of phone calls at that point between, you know, Craftsports Entertainment and Town Hall and the police chief and the State of Advisory Committee and sort of all of us huddling up and just trying to figure out, okay, you know, where did we go wrong? How does this not happen again? This obviously isn't something that is acceptable by our standards. So, thankfully, the residents who were impacted were also helpful in just explaining, giving us sort of timestamps and vehicle descriptions and helping us sort of get to the, the bottom of it. Um, and it's not, it's not an easy fix. You know, it's, it's definitely a multi-pronged, it was a couple of things that were, that created the problem, and it'll be a couple of things that we need to fix. It was tricky because in that case, it was a weekday event. It was a, a half-international match, which was kind of tricky in that it was a, it was the Rebs playing Chelsea. So, we had half of, a large amount of the stadium was Rebs fans that know how to navigate. But then there was a big international contingent on a weekday that created a real traffic snarl because, kind of going back to that wayfinding app, um, concern. It's really challenging when you get people coming to the building for the first time because they're so dependent on Google Maps and Waze. And they're not, you know, they'll, they'll drive off of a cliff if that's what Waze tells them to do, right? We've all sort of been guilty of that at one point or another. And so, part of the regional dispatch conversation we had was that they'll now, public safety will be able to, um, shut down roads where we as a private entity don't have the ability to do that. So, it'll be, that'll be really helpful moving forward.
That, that sounds fascinating, that they were able to do this.
It really was, yeah.
We were really impressed.
He made an unbelievable presentation to us.
Yeah, we got to hear that.
Yeah, it's actually quite, quite interesting. But the one thing that we tried to manage was, uh, the, the flow of information. Because one thing that's particularly concerning is if we have information come into us, we, we automatically redirected it back to the committee because that's where all that work gets done. So, we didn't want to take on answering all those questions because we don't want to confuse the information that was coming out of, of the committee's work. So, we, we did our best to try and redirect everything back to the committee. That way, it stayed in the right, right place, and then everybody was able to address it appropriately.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
A motion to approve.
Oh, wait, no.
Not yet.
Move to close.
Move to close the meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now you're on.
No. Motion to approve Gillette Stadium event application for the International Champions Cup on July twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those approve? Passes. Alright, Chief, you got to go up one now.
Now, up.
Mad Decent.
Public hearing.
Mad Decent.
Public hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter two-two-nine, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at eight-ten P.M. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass, to review the application submitted by Craftsports and Entertainment LLC for Mad Decent Music Festival. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium and the east parking lots. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Okay, so, uh, this is sort of out of all of the, the events that we've talked about or that I've talked to you guys about this evening. This is the, the newest, and this is, uh, the Mad Decent Music Festival scheduled for, uh, Friday, July twentieth, and Saturday, July twenty-first. And this is, uh, our first sort of foray into a modern music festival. This is similar to what Harvard hosted this weekend, um, at Boston Calling, a much, much, much smaller scale. But that sort of, um, modern, vibrant, fresh music festival, that's not like anything that we've done, uh, at Gillette Stadium before. It's definitely a trend that we're seeing in the industry, especially if you like look at the summer. I had mentioned earlier how a lot of sort of those titans have touring. When they take time off, they leave these voids within your building that you want to continue to program. And one thing that we're seeing over and over and over, that, the growth of these sort of music festival-style events where patrons want to come in and be able to free-flow, look at different acts, see them at different times, not necessarily catch every single performer, but free-flow between different stages, different, um, interaction and different elements. And it's, um, it's really dynamic and it's different, and we've, we've advanced music festivals sort of across the country for the last few years. And it's been, it's, it's very different from what we're used to. So, this is our first step in that direction. It's obviously important for us to stay, uh, relevant as a building and as a, a group of, of concert promoters. So, the producer and the promoter of this event, um, is John Reese with SGE. And SGE is, is a reputable concert producer and promoter. They host events, um, like this across the country, and they typically do it in much more challenging spaces. They do a significant event down in Southern California directly on the beach. Um, they do a much more isolated version of this in the greater New Jersey area, um, where they're sort of out in the middle of the woods. So, for them to come to Gillette Stadium is, is a layup, much easier, obviously, when it comes to everything from staging and load-in, power. Um, all of the resources that they need are, are in this space. It's a two, it's a two-day event, two full days where music would begin at one o'clock. Um, the footprint of the stadium is actually one that we've already executed before successfully two times over with the, um, Feld Supercross events. So, that, that footprint encompasses our east club parking lots. And so, our fans will enter into the building in between, at the Patriot Place Gate, which is in between the pro shop and the ticket office. And then at that point, they're in the building, and they'll be able to free-flow from the one-hundred level of the building or from the field level of the building, which is where they enter, into the east club parking lot via the building. And there'll be a, a full fence line set up that essentially attaches to the sides of the stadium. So, we create a footprint that allows fans to go through one security entry checkpoint on the inn and then go in between the field where there will be the main stage, and then the parking lots where we'll have two other stages and a whole host of different interactive elements. So, it's one that we've used in the past, and like I said, we've used it two times before and, and successfully at that. So, the, the next, I think the, the most important aspect of this event is that, or I think that what I, we want everybody to know is that this isn't something that we brought to the building without consulting with, uh, public safety. So, from the very beginning before, it was actually, we started the conversation with Chief Hatfield and Chief Baker, um, you know, brought SGE out, did full walkthroughs of the building with the chiefs. Um, they've connected, the chiefs and the deputy chiefs have connected with their counterparts in other parts of the country that have hosted events like this, events produced by SGE. Um, so they're, they're communicating with one another. So, it was important for us, coming before the board, bringing an event like this into the community that's incredibly unique and is our first sort of pass at this, making sure that it's executed flawlessly and making sure that the community and that the public safety officials are completely comfortable and a hundred percent, um, you know, in support because it is so, so unique.
Can you just confirm the dates? Because I think you had said Friday and Saturday, and the dates that we're looking at are Saturday, Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry, July, it's the twentieth and the twenty-first.
So, Saturday, Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday, yeah. I apologize.
Anyone from the public? Any other questions from the board?
The, the extension of the liquor license to go outside the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, you're going to have a fence that's going to cover lots, five A, five B, six A, and part of six C. How high is that fence going to be? Do we know?
I know it's, the, the plan is for it to be the same one that we used for Supercross, so it's, I don't even want to take a guess. I'd rather give you the correct information so I can find that out and let you know. It's, it's, it's high, it's much taller than I am, uh, and then it's, it's also...
Is it going to be like a, like a six-foot, you know, temporary fence? I, I don't remember what was, what was done with the Supercross.
Yeah, it's at least that tall. It's significantly taller than me, not saying much, but it is significantly taller than me, I know just from being in this space. Um, but I, that's an excellent question, and I can definitely find out the, the answer for you.
Because that, that would be a concern, if it's just a, just a four-foot fence.
Oh, yeah, no.
Without proper security, drinks being bought inside, passed outside, and just, you know.
Yeah, it's not, this isn't a tailgating crowd. This crowd comes into the building and then stays in the building for eleven hours. But the, the integrity of the event itself is that you have to pay to get into that parking lot area. So, from a public safety standpoint, it's important that the fences is high enough and opaque enough and sturdy enough to support the crowd, but also they don't want people getting a free shot.
Right.
So, you know, it'll, it'll absolutely be enough of a barrier to prevent any sort of communication or passback.
Just, um, just, I want to interject here just a bit because there is, um, I'm not sure if you, you may know, may not aware of this, Jess, but there is, um, there's some question as to whether or not you can actually, you can extend the license, use of the license for, into the parking lot. So, there had, there would be one-day license request that would have to be done for the parking lot areas because they don't, because it doesn't fit the, the same footprint of the stadium in that regard. So, based upon our, our council's, uh, evaluation of that. So, um, I think Pam is working on that to try and get that straightened out for you. But, um, but it, so it will be limited to just beer and wine for, for those areas, uh, outside the stadium itself.
So, it would be two one-day licenses?
Correct.
And when people buy tickets to the show, Jess, sorry if you mentioned this and I missed it, do they buy an individual ticket or one for both days?
You have the option. So, you can buy a single-day pass or you can buy a weekend pass. And I think right now, we're, we're thinking it'll probably be between ten and twelve thousand people each day.
So, when you buy a ticket for either day, it gets you into either the field or into this parking lot?
No, it gets you into the whole footprint.
Okay.
So, you're in the stadium, and the stadium extends into the east club parking lot.
You can go back and forth and...
Yep. You can move in between the two. It's nice from, just from a control standpoint because you come into the, the building, which includes that extended footprint, and then you're there. You're there for the entire day. All of our resources are there. We don't have any in-and-out concerns. We don't have any, uh, tailgating. It's much more controlled from our standpoint. Everybody comes into the building and then stays within the building. Um, and it's actually not tickets, it's like an RFD wristband that you put on and you keep on, which is standard in sort of festivals across the country.
Okay, and you mentioned the parking lot configuration. You had done this for Supercross?
Yes.
Same size parking lots?
Yep.
Taken up?
That might be a, a little bit larger. Uh, this, I think the Supercross lot is a little bit longer because the Supercross footprint encompasses the actual pit areas where they're working on their bikes in addition to the space where they're doing all of their fan activations. So, this might be a little bit smaller, not significantly. It's still essentially the same.
And what time, maybe you can help me before I pull up it, what time does the music start? And what time does it end? And what type of music are we talking?
So, the music would begin at one, and then it would be over by Town Curfew at eleven fifteen. Um, and it's a really broad mix from a demographic standpoint. The, the headliner is, uh, a pop artist. Um, it's a, it's a girl, Billie Eilish, out of Southern California, who's kind of like a, a, a pop sensation right now. And then it's a mix of sort of young contemporary sort of Gen Z acts, and then, um, some hip-hop acts mixed in. So, it's, it's not all one genre. It's, um, there's not any, country isn't represented at all sort of in this lineup. But after that, it's a really, it's a very mixed bag.
The Doc's kind of music is what you're saying?
Yeah, you know, it's...
Not mine, but both of my boys have gone to a number of, uh, those type of concerts.
Do you guys have any concerns or any plans for people, I mean, where it ends late, and then I imagine the lot's open the next morning? People trying to like sleep over in lots or, you know, festival people, I think of them kind of coming and staying. So, any, anything to talk about there, plans there?
So, we, yeah, we absolutely, um, know that that's parts in some festivals, that's certainly part of the culture. In like a Boston Calling, that's, they don't even have parking lots, so people expect to go back and forth for three full days. Um, in this case, we are going to message that there's no overnight parking and simply not allow it. So, if we find cars in the parking lots, well, after they've cleared for the evening, they'll be moved along. There'll be absolutely no overnight parking. No RVs, none of that.
Stadium advisory?
Uh, yeah, it's new. I think back to thirty years ago when it was like much different when they were looking at something like this. Uh, we were looking at something like this. I guess our concern was, and, and Jess allayed the concern, the stages, the band, the stages are set up so that they're, they're playing into, towards the stadium, right? They're not playing out towards the community, even though they're outside. The, it's set up so that, uh, they're playing, to use that backdrop of the stadium, and they don't anticipate, it's going to be really loud.
No, and that the staging is actually, the exterior stages are significantly smaller than the interior, which is the main stage. The exterior stages are similar in scope and size to what we use, uh, in Lot four A for a Patriots game. We have a stage there now that we have set up for every game, and we have live music on that, um, to sort of play for fans as they're heading into the building. So, it'll be very similar to that, which we've been able to execute for two years now without any issues.
So, not the volumes of like your typical full-stadium shows?
Yeah, the vol, the volume inside will be drastically different from the volume outside. And we have, you know, they are, um, SGE is, it's entirely self-contained in that they can produce and execute these events on their own. But we've brought in Jackie Dotley just for that reason, so that we have somebody who's, um, familiar with the building and familiar with the relationship, who is, who's going to be onsite from loaded, the first piece loading in to the last piece loading out, to, um, be representing us in our best interest, which is making sure that this event runs really smoothly and that it's one that the community can embrace.
Great. Any other questions?
Uh, motion to approve Gillette's... Close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Alright. No, you're on.
No. Motion to approve Gillette Stadium event application for the Mad Decent Music Festival. Motion to approve Gillette Stadium event application for the Mad Decent Music Festival on July 20th and 21st, 2019.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna be there for the first one, so, let you know.
All right. Um, probably a little too early for Wormtown Brewery, don't see anybody, uh, both cable, television accesses, uh, should we wait on that, too?
Maybe a little early, too. Um, Jess, just before you go, it might, it might be helpful just to inform the board that we were very close to, I don't know how much fun you've had doing these license, uh, licensing events, but we actually were very close to doing an annual license, uh, which is something we've been talking about for a couple of years now, um, and, and actually have had several iterations, and gone through this with Town Council, and with Council from the crafts, and, uh, we worked through this quite extensively for a number of years now, and we, we think we're close, we think we're very close, actually, we had a very good meeting, um, last Friday, um, and I think we're, we're getting to the point, so what happened is effectively you'd issue one license for the entire year, with, all the events would be listed, um, in a certain time of year, we haven't quite decided that yet, as to what time of year that would be, but it would be, all the, all the events would be listed out, and then it would be effectively one license, one license hearing, and we would go through all that. It'd be easier for the, for the, for the committee as well, to do that, and it would be, so obviously, extensive review, it may take a little bit extra time to do that, but it'll be done once, instead of multiple times. Now, there, there's gonna be, there may be instances where certain acts will come up that weren't anticipated, that will become, that may require a special meeting before the board to, to amend that license, but it was, it would actually make this process a lot easier, so we'd have one process to do that. Now, one of the things that came up during the conversation, is that there is, the state statute actually limits the, the issuance of a license, uh, from January 1st through December 31st of each year. Now, that's what's, what's problematic about that, is the fact that football, as you know, runs into the next, next calendar year, and it goes into, effectively, February, uh, where the last game is played typically in, in the end of January for make the playoffs. So, we've, we've kicked it around a little bit, and one of the thoughts that we had was to perhaps amend the statute, that it would allow us to actually run the license for perhaps May 30, for March 1st, until February, the, the last day of February, cause obviously, February changes for me, uh, every so many years, from 28th to 29th, so it'll be the last calendar day of February. Um, I did talk with, uh, State Representative Barrows, who said he'd be willing to, to entertain that, but certainly, I wanna make sure that we, before we finalize that, we certainly wanna have the board make sure the board will be comfortable as following that legislation, that would amend that, that, that statute. And I don't even know if, I don't even know if it would mean just a special act just for Gillette Stadium, because there are other venues in, throughout the state, in the Commonwealth, um, Fenway Park, I don't know if it comes under Boston, you know, Boston Garden comes under, under Boston, so, we don't know if they have special legislation just for those, those venues themselves. But, it's something that we talked about, and, uh, makes, seems to make a lot of sense, and everybody seems to be in agreement, that was the right way to go, so, we just wanted to give you that update, Jess was at the meeting, uh, just, I'm glad she's here tonight, to sort of, uh, convey the same impression I had, that I thought the meeting went very, very well.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we addressed a lot, we addressed a lot of issues that, uh, that we've been talking about for quite some time.
So, in a case like, like this, this evening, where we had three of the events that, you know, four of the events really, that I presented to you guys, were events that we've had, we have precedent, um, you know, there are ones that we've had issue-free, those would sort of fall underneath something that would already be encompassed in that universal event license, um, the Mad Decent Festival's, something new and different, and, uh, we would probably be before you to sort of have that conversation publicly prior to, um, that event. So, things that we're seeing on a regular annual basis, like the Patriots license, and the Revs license, the season-long licenses, the events that we're seeing two, three, four, or even on an annual basis, um, would fall under this universal event license, and this is an event license that is used in Mansfield, for the Xfinity Center, for the most part, this is how, um, venues of our size and, and scope operate, we're just a little bit slow in, in adapting to that.
So, I thought at one point, I know, we, we discussed it a little bit ago, that the Patriots would be carved out anyway.
Well, if we, if we're able to, um, change the, the, uh, the calendar day, we might have, the only trouble is that the, the Patriots' schedule typically comes out, the NFL schedule doesn't come out until April, um, like this first, second week in April, so we, we may have to carve that out anyways, but just about everything else would fall into that category.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an incredibly nuanced document, so I don't wanna go into detail now, without having it in front of me, and also, obviously, you guys will be reviewing it in detail as well, um, but every, every event, as it would come online, the town and the Board of Selectmen would be notified in writing well in advance, so that, it, it's not so much a license to just, it's not a blanket license, it's more of just a way in which we can operate a little more efficiently for existing events that we know we have, um, and then as things continue to grow, and as we build out our season, because obviously, we don't know everything that's gonna happen, you know, that last day in February, the board will be notified, and, and we'll continue to have a dialogue as we need to, with new events as they come on board.
So, so the reason why this is important, is the fact that, um, you know, this is an industry, and it's, it's, it's a way to compete with other venues around the country, um, and one of the things that is, the industry becomes a lot more competitive, there's a lot more smaller venues now, taking on shows, um, we're competing with, with, with Fenway Park, you know, for very events, and as well as Mansfield, and other venues across the country, but, what's interesting about this, is that it makes it easier for them to plan for those shows, and to, and, and to nail down the, uh, the various entertainers, so it does make sense for us to, to actually take a look at this process, and, uh, and this has actually spanned a couple of boards, and so you, we've already had this conversation with some of you, not all of you, and so I wanted to make sure that we updated you and kept you abreast of what's happening with that, and now what's, this is, we're not asking for any approvals, and I would just, I just wanted to keep you up to speed as to what's going on with this, and our last meeting was just Friday, so, and it was very, it sounded like a, a very progressive meeting, so I wanted to keep you, we'll be, we'll be back before you with Town Council's presence, and, and, uh, and the members of the team that have been working on this for quite some time.
When do you think we'll see that?
Um, it's probably within, probably 30 days, we should be doing that.
Oh, that's soon.
Yeah. And it really has been ye, ye, years in the making, um, but we're close now, both councils are comfortable and about ready to make, make that presentation.
We're getting close.
Great.
So, you've had discussions then with Mansfield?
We haven't, no, we, we, we have not discussed our license with Mansfield, but Mansfield does have an annual license.
Right. And I, and feedback, going back into my private prior life, uh, I know that they much preferred, uh, the fact, the public safety personnel much preferred the system we had, because they found sometimes, things would get rolled in with the one license for the season, that was less than palatable, and there wouldn't be a lot of communication about it.
So, with due respect to that point, um, the language in this particular license indicates that, that police and fire maintain full control over each event as, as they are scheduled, so that, so that part of it was taken into consideration.
Exactly, I think is essential.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm gonna leave again.
All right, thanks, Jess.
All righty, so, um, sort of work back, is, you wanna do some action items to, uh... You, you wanna go to, uh, is that cable? You ready?
What do you want, Council?
We're still waiting for our chair, Mark Stope, I don't believe is here yet.
Okay. No, I don't see him.
We're gonna schedule here tonight, so...
Action items, so, this'll throw you in the middle of everything, uh, now to it. Okay. So, we gotta approve like, a half a dozen action items. Does the entire request have to be?
No.
Go back. Just move to... Make a motion, uh, to approve extension of closing hours for food service to 2:00 AM on 6/8/2019, 7/6/2019, 7/27/2019, 8/17/2019, 9/7/2019, 10/5/2019, 11/2/2019, and 12/14/2019, for the CBS Sporting Club, uh, for an extension of food service to 2:00 AM on those dates.
Second.
All right, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Scott Dion in the amount of $1,849.50.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Charles Gallagher in the amount of $4,590.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion to reappoint William Casparra to the Billboard Advisory Committee for one year term, expiring May 1st, 2020.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, motion to accept a gift donation in the, of $200 to the Foxborough Police Department from the Hockamaw Kennel Club for canine maintenance.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You'll have to do each of those individually, cause I have to abstain from one of them.
The last item is the, uh, motion to approve meeting minutes from 4/2, 2019.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, cause I wasn't there, obviously.
I abstained.
Now, we can do the other two.
All right. Motion to approve meeting minutes from 5/13/2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve meeting minutes from 5/14/2019.
Second, and under discussion, I had one edit. Uh, what was it? On page 11, uh... Third sentence, I was referring to, um, Mike Johns, there was, there was no, there's no comment there. Okay? So, other than that, it was fine.
Okay. Any others? Corrections?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Uh, go to Selectmen's update.
Ken, feel like?
Okay, Selectmen's update. Uh, first of all, as, as mentioned earlier, uh, during citizens input, the Memorial Day celebration was, uh, outstanding, uh, our veteran agent, Ally Rodriguez, did an outstanding job for her first time, I'm sure she was tutored well by someone else we know, uh, but she did an outstanding job, uh, even though she was nervous the whole time. It was a beautiful day, it was a beautiful turnout, I can't believe how, no, it was great how, how much of the community turned out, and, um, I guess the first time in a while, it was a sunny day. Uh, also, one other thing, um, the farmer's market's gonna start up, uh, up at the Common June 6th, uh, it's a Thursday night, um, supposedly more, um, stalls will be added, uh, it's gonna be, uh, more and more vendors wanna come to that event, and should be a lot of fun, and it'll be every Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00, I think it's 4:00 to 8:00, 4:00 to 7:00 or 4:00 to 8:00, uh, for the next 10 weeks. Uh, anybody else?
No.
All right, great. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just again, wanted to say thank you to Ally for doing a great job, and to all of you for, for being there, is, is, it was a great event, a good, really good turnout, uh, perfect day for it, and the conditions were ideal for, for that event, and so I'm glad it was, it was a great day for everybody. Um, just to, um, remind the board that you have a meeting again tomorrow night, um, I will not be joining you tomorrow night, uh, I have, uh, I've actually had previous plans to be at a meeting down the Cape, um, starting tomorrow afternoon, so, um, so I will be, uh, Mike will be here, uh, to join you, but, actually, I think you've all heard all the issues associated with this for quite some time, so I'm not sure how much I could really add to this conversation anyways, so, um, but you will be, uh, so don't be surprised when you don't see me here tomorrow night, but Mike is, uh, Mike is gonna be here anyways, and, and Town Council will be here as well, to, to help you with that, in case any legal issues come up, one way or the other.
Yeah, and, and just to really reiterate what you said, uh, at, at that last meeting, it's mostly just a discussion from the board members that will be able to vote.
It'll be deliberation amongst the board members, and then you can vote accordingly.
Right.
Uh, those, those of you that can vote, obviously, in that case. Um, I think one thing that you should really determine, though, uh, before the meeting starts, is who's gonna chair that meeting, because, um, I think we, we should have that conversation, uh, ahead of time, um, just so that it's clear, uh, cause obviously, you can't chair, and, and you can't chair either, uh, Leah, so, um...
My, my thought was, was Chris, since, you know, you can chair through most of it.
Yeah, I asked Bill to ask Kate, I mean, where, um, two out of the three...
Right.
...voted positions can't, I mean, would it default to the clerk, or would it default to another boardman?
It, it really does fall to the board, and, and how you wanna handle it, um, Ed is the newest member of the board, and so, um, obviously, um, it's a, obviously, it's a bit, a bit of a challenge to, to handle that for a first meeting.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't feel confident...
Yeah, but I, I just wanna make sure that we're...
...with the experience that I've had, this is my second meeting.
No, I'm tracking, but I just wanted to make sure that we do everything procedurally right on this process.
She'll be, she'll be actually at the meeting anyways.
Right, I'll, I'll start the meeting, I'll open the meeting.
Right.
And then I'll defer, I'll ask Kate, can I hand the gavel over to, uh, Chris?
But my understanding, Chris, is that, is that it, it is up to the board and how they wanna decide, and it's, it's your call, as board members.
Okay, is that from Kate, or from your understanding?
That's, that's my, my discussion with Kate.
Okay.
And I probably won't come at all, just so you guys know, I think it's just better where you guys are taking a vote, if I, I'm gonna choose to not sit in the audience for this one, so, when I'm not here, don't be surprised.
It's not that I'm not interested, I'm clearly interested in the issue, but I just, timing-wise, it just didn't work, work out, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
But I, I had spoken to you before that.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So, um, and then, um, beyond that, I just, um, still making our way through, uh, through, you know, getting ready for, trying to wrap up the fiscal year, uh, we've got a number of things to take care of during the month of June, so we'll be, we'll be pretty busy for the next, next 30 days, so, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, nice new placard.
I noticed, not on paper anymore, guess I'm here to stay for a little bit. Uh, so, I just have a couple of quick updates, uh, Foxborough High School graduation coming up this weekend, um, of course, we had our seniors do their last day of school a week ago, um, Student Government Day is coming up, uh, a week from today, so they'll be in this very chamber, running their own selectmen meeting, and, as well as, uh, being shadowed and mentored in, you know, number of the offices around town, and then, of course, coming up on June 8th is Founder's Day, which is a big, uh, big time and, and event in this town, so, that's all I have.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, why don't we look into, uh, to the reappointment of the interim finance director, Town Accountant?
So, my, my recommendation remains the same, Mr. Chairman, to appoint Christine DuPereaux as the interim, interim finance director.
I gotta continue the motion.
Uh, motion to...
Do we have, just an, an update on the positions as far as applications, how's the, are we still on track for the timing we discussed?
We are, so the, uh... So the, the new, the finance director position is posted through a number of avenues. We are receiving applications. We are still on track, and we'll be starting to review those applications at the end of this month. And so there is not a deadline, per se, on, you know, closing out, receiving those applications. We're going to start reviewing them and then, you know, receive them and review until we fill the position.
Not surprisingly, though, the applications are pretty thin.
Yeah, and I thought I read that there was a May 31st date on the posting.
Correct, that's when we're going to start reviewing them.
Okay.
But that's not closing out
That's not a hard, fast date, though.
Right, we purposely left it open so that we continue to receive application packages. We just want the opportunity to start reviewing them right at the end of this month.
And just to be clear on that, it's not a reflection on Foxborough, it's just an industry-wide concern that there is, it's a difficult position to recruit for.
I am a little bit concerned, though, without our online application system right now, which I think that's still the case, are we setting ourselves up at a disadvantage? So normally, we have an online tool where jobs are posted. We're kind of going back old school right now, and all the resumes have to be, you know, people have to find the job wherever it is and then email things over to HR@Foxborough. So, any update there on the online tool? Are we, you know, is that impacting our search at all? Because I would think that that could be.
No, not necessarily. I mean, because the, it's still the same as if you were, it's going out to the same, same venues for advertising, it's just a question of where you send it to.
Okay.
So that shouldn't impact us really at all. It was easier on us to process things, but not necessarily to, in terms of impacting the number of applications we would receive.
And any update on timing for that? Because I know it's a minor thing, but it impacts the performance reviews for the whole town, you know, with that lack of that system right now since kind of the beginning of May.
Sure. So what that's done is it's made it a lot more work-intensive on our end, obviously, to receive and review and to not be able to categorize and sort through the, you know, the volume of, you know, resumes, as well as on the evaluation side, the number of evaluations. But I don't have a timeline on that right now. We are searching for a vendor, and we'll competitively bid that at that time, but right now, we're proceeding with this recruitment just the way we used to do it, you know, not too many years ago. So we expect to successfully, you know, recruit a new finance director in that, in that way. And we don't plan on shifting gears in the middle of this recruitment, you know, if we bring on an online vendor.
Motion to reappoint Christine Dupers as interim finance director slash town accountant until June 25th, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you guys ready?
Sure.
Awesome. Come on up.
Good evening, how are we doing?
Doing well, how are you?
Very well. Just very short status and
Why don't you mention for the people at home who you guys are and why you're here?
Mark Stopp, I'm the chair of the Foxborough Cable Access Television Committee, Advisory Committee on Renewal of the Comcast contract for the town. And these are other board members, they can introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Paul Beck, I'm the president of Foxborough Cable Access.
Mike Weber, executive director of Foxborough Cable Access.
Dave Udine, just a member of the committee.
Thank you. So the Fox, the Cable Television Advisory Committee has been working with Comcast, the negotiations are ongoing. I'm pleased to report that things are going better now than the last time I gave a status report to the Board of Selectmen, but it's too early to really say how successful all of it will be, but we are making progress. For instance, something that wasn't necessarily part of the negotiating terms was getting stereo sound for our local programming. Oddly enough, most of the world would have been surprised that we weren't broadcasting in stereo, and for those of you who watch, the sound has increased, or has improved markedly because Comcast was able to send out some technicians. We figured out what the issue was with trying to get the broadcast out in stereo. Mr. Weber worked with them very closely, and we now have stereo. And it didn't, wasn't hinted on the contract, that was kind of a good faith thing on their part, and we were pleased to see that that happened in a quick fashion without delay or trying to hold it up for purposes of negotiations. For purposes of this evening, what we need to do is we need to send a request for, well, some people call it request for proposal, but it's not really, it's request for response to Comcast. So we've, we had ascertainment hearings some months ago and established what the needs are for the town. We have a document that goes to them, it's a formal request for response to Town of Foxborough's ascertainment regarding cable television renewal license. While this sounds like it's a comprehensive sort of a move, it really isn't. It's just part of the process. In order to protect our rights going forward, we have a deadline of tomorrow to get this to them, just as a holding place, if you will. Negotiations are going to continue just as they have been, but if for some reason all of that fell apart, we have preserved our rights going forward so that we can take whatever action you all deem necessary, because you're the licensing authority, which is why we find ourselves sitting here this evening, because you have to give us the go-ahead. I believe that you have, I'm not sure if it's in your packet or if Mr. Keegan has it, there was a motion that we would like you all to consider to allow us, give us authority to serve Comcast with the request for response. And again, it's just a formality as part of the process in order to preserve our rights going forward.
Should we put that back up information, are you?
You gave me the memo that I
Is it in the memo?
Well, there was a memo that was, William Solomon, who's our counsel for the committee, I know that he prepared a memorandum. There was, Mr. Keegan, did you get a copy of the
I got a memo from him.
It would have come today, it was a motion. In this event, I had brought one anyhow.
Yeah, yeah.
I did not see anything today.
I didn't see it either. So really, you want us to read this as a motion and
Read that as a motion and you authorize us to take this action?
The challenge is that sometimes when people send us stuff from the outside, it gets hung up in our firewall.
That's why I brought
And it gets, it gets late, it comes in late, I'll probably see it tomorrow morning.
No doubt.
Typically how it happens.
Okay, so. I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen, as cable television licensing issuing authority, vote to request and authorize the Cable Advisory Committee to issue to Comcast of Massachusetts slash New Hampshire LLC its request for response to the Town of Foxborough's ascertainment regarding cable television renewal license.
Second.
All right, any questions, further discussion?
So, under discussion. This, this motion that we just made meets the deadline and still gives you the ability to negotiate with Comcast.
Oh, yeah. I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. This is a, there are certain timelines that you have to meet in order to preserve your rights going forward, all right? It's as if you had a trial in the courthouse, you have 14 days to file a notice of appeal just to protect your rights. Well, this is, this is a notice requirement. It puts it on their plate to give us a response to what we've said, all the litany of things that we think are necessary for purposes of the license. It's really, it's a holding, it's not going to hold up negotiations, negotiations are going fine, but in order for us to be able to keep our seat in negotiations, we need to protect our interests going forward. That's all this does. They're more than aware of all the things that are in there, both in some ways very technically and specifically, in other ways very generally, because from the time of the first ascertainment meeting and hearing to now, they've been put on notice of all the things that we find to be important and that are on the table, and we discuss them every time we meet.
Okay, all those in favor? opposed? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. 8:40, Wormtown Brewery, are they here yet?
We're waiting for Brian Early, he was right behind us in traffic.
Okay.
Probably 60 seconds.
Yeah, no, 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 no problem.
We're running a little ahead of schedule tonight, so.
Oh, 8:40, perfect.
Yeah?
Come on.
Well, sorry.
First time around.
Thanks, I, good, how are you? See you.
Yeah, so we'll wait a couple of sections. Is Big Night here?
Yes.
Should we jump ahead or wait a
It's all part of, it's all part of it, right?
Big Night's completely
It's two different ones.
Okay.
Do we get to open the public hearing anyways?
On, oh, yeah, we can read that, should we read that now?
Which one?
Well, let's do the 8:40, the Wormtown Brewery, read the public, no, just read the public notice. Okay.
But then go to Big Night?
No, 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 stay with it.
Always waiting on you.
No, you're actually, we're right on time.
Go ahead, yep. The Board of Selectmen, acting as local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, beginning at 8:40 p.m. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Woody South Street, on the application of an on-premises annual farmer series pouring permit for Wormtown Brewery LLC, DBA Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Manager is David Fields. Additional applicant requests approval of a common chiller's license and a seven-day entertainment license for the established hours of operation. All interested parties are welcome to attend. All righty, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Chairman, board, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Brian Early with Craft Group Patriot Place, here to, in some ways, follow up on something we started back in the fall when we introduced the Battle Road Tap Room concept to Patriot Place. The reason you're dealing with Wormtown Brewery here is in the interim since the fall and early winter, Battle Road and Wormtown have entered into an agreement and contract for Wormtown to take over their brewery operations, in which will include the brewery and tap room at Patriot Place. So you're meeting David Fields tonight, the first time, he's one of the managing partners of Wormtown. Patriot Place is very excited about having Wormtown because they are, they are a bit of a bigger name, if you will, in the brewery circles. They have a long history of operating a tap room successfully in Worcester, they're a Worcester-based company. Certainly, the Craft family has a long history of, in Worcester, both professionally as well as personally, so bringing together Wormtown to Patriot Place and for this concept was something we were very excited about being part of. The reason we did not come back as soon as we planned to for the formal brewery build-out discussion was the length of time it took to consummate this business arrangement with, between Battle Road and Wormtown. Wormtown is the official tenant, we have shifted the, the lease is with Wormtowns because that's who's going to be operating Patriot Place, so we've done all of our due diligence. I met with the folks at Wormtown several times, have looked at their plans for the build-out of the brewery, and I think what you hear tonight, you'll be very happy that we're stepping up the game a little bit by bringing someone like Wormtown to the town. Kristen Scanlon, to my immediate right, is representing Wormtown, so I'm going to turn things over to her to talk about the, what we're here to do tonight, and a little bit of education that probably started back in September that we need to continue regarding the farmer brewers licensing, because this will be the first time this has been in front of this board in this town. So I will now turn it over to Kristen.
Thanks, Brian. Again, Kristen Scanlon, Scanlon Law in Boston. To my immediate right is David Fields, as Brian mentioned, who's the managing partner of Wormtown, and to his right is Shane Egan, who is their new director of retail operations. I was here with Brian when we started this at Battle Road, and I know we had somewhat of an informal discussion on what the 19C farmer brewing pouring permit looks like and what that process is, and I know that it's a new thing with the city, and I appreciate the board's willingness to take this somewhat out of traditional order as the permitting process goes for this type of licensure. I did have a conversation when the business transaction transpired between Battle Road and Wormtown, because there was a little bit of a setback in what the original timeframe looked like as to how we could somewhat expedite the process because of the three-level licensure that is required. So I appreciate that the board is willing to entertain that contingent upon approval of the federal and state licensure, which we're also simultaneously in the process of applying for and receiving. But again, by way of background, this is somewhat different and in some ways similar to what the board is generally used to seeing with the Section 12 restaurant licenses and the Section 15 off-premises licenses, because of the three-tier license process that we need to go through. And first is getting the federal TTB permit, which allows for the commercial production of the product, and then the state license, which allows the brewery to manufacture and sell its own beer at retail or wholesale. And then finally, and what we're here before you this evening requesting is approval for the pouring permit, which the municipalities around the state grant approval for, which is obviously similar in some ways to what you allow under a Section 12 license, but different in that it allows them to pour their own manufactured product on-site from their tap room and move it over, or from the brewery and move it over to the tap room and pour it there. There are a few distinctions between the 12 pouring license and the 19C pouring permit, which is what we're requesting, and one that, again, it allows them to pour their own product on the premises. It's different in that it's outside of any quota system within each town or municipality that generally has a quota system in the state, and it's different in the sense that they're not going to pour any wine, any distilled spirits, any other product that isn't their own product under their own brand name, or another product that is, has been manufactured for them but under the Wormtown name. So in other words, you're not going to walk in and be able to get a Budweiser, Heineken, or anything else, everything that you would drink in the tap room would be under the Wormtown Brewery's brand name. Those are some of the main distinctions as far as the pouring permit is concerned, but also the 19C pouring permit allows them to have an off-premise consumption component as well. So people would be able to come in and buy the product and take it away to drink at home, which would include cans and growlers as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding those distinctions, but those are kind of the general and basic overview of them as to how they differ from what the town is used to seeing with alcohol permitting thus far. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to David so he can tell you a little bit about the brewery itself that they have in Worcester, and then we can go from there.
Excellent, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Select persons and leadership from the Town of Foxborough, my name is David Fields, and I'm the managing partner of Wormtown Brewery, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to tell our story. and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to tell our story this evening. I must begin with an apology, because it's, this is the first time I think I've ever spoken about our brewery and not shared beer with anybody. I just felt this might not be the most appropriate format. I do have beer-flavored chapstick, if anybody wants some, before we leave this evening, I'd be happy to share that with you. So if I could just talk a little bit about our objective today, and with the town of Foxborough, for, for the future of our business here, talk a little bit about our history at Wormtown, which is a nickname for the city of Worcester, happy to share that with you guys if you have that question, and then share a little bit about tap rooms and how they do differ from traditional on-premise retail operations, from staffing and how we handle food, security, and how we tie into the communities, because that's always very important for any tap room to be really local, and that's important to all of us. So Wormtown Brewery itself is just past its ninth anniversary in the city of Worcester. We opened on St. Patrick's Day, which happens to be a really good day to go out and participate in, in sharing beers with friends. So we celebrate our anniversary, or be our 10th anniversary next, next March, and we started an ice cream shop, about nine hundred square feet in the city of Worcester. We now currently occupy twenty-seven thousand square feet, and we employed four people to start, and today we're up to about thirty-seven employees. Most of that has happened in the last five years with, with our growth. As a brewery, we actually, there are seven thousand breweries in the United States today. When we started nine years ago, there was about eighteen hundred. We are the one hundred and fourteenth largest brewery in the United States, which is something we're very, very proud of, and it's a pretty neat accomplishment from the men and women who work at our brewery. We have had an active tap room for coming on five years now, as the farmer brewers' pouring license has become new, we're actually the first farmer brewers' pouring license issued in the city of Worcester. As of this spring, there will be six, one of which is our old location where we rented the equipment and helped kick-start a new brewery to come to the area, to help build and promote the beer tourism culture, which we thought was very important. We felt as though the city of Worcester needed more than one brewery, and it would be a really cool effort for us to be the ones who helped lead that way. We have operated for five years now, as I mentioned, without any incidents of alcohol license issues, and leading into that, I'd like to talk a little bit about our ownership group, which I'm a member of, and our history. So we have five owners, one of whom is the founder and head brewer, in addition to which two of my other partners and myself have been in the alcohol industry for combined one hundred years, through family businesses, mostly beer distributors. I happen to own and operate a beer distributor, if you guys are familiar with Quality Beverages in Taunton, Mass. They were my partners for about nine years, and I sold the rest of my business to them and moved into the Wormtown position that I am today. My other two partners owned and operated beer, wine, non-alcohol operations similar to Quality in three states, New Hampshire, Vermont, and part of, parts of Massachusetts. So between us, we have a pretty extensive history of operating within the three-tier system, understanding local licensing issues, and more importantly, a lot of the trials and tribulations that do come with alcohol, especially to communities. We've spent numerous amounts of our own personal time, as well as our own resources, on efforts to help promote what we call consumer awareness and education, participating in local school programs, et cetera, to help teach kids how to not make destructive decisions, and we've always been part of the communities that way. Among that group, again, over a hundred years and, and within our families, never once has there been a citation with any of our businesses when it comes to alcohol laws, which is something we're very proud of. When we talk about tap room businesses, again, they operate a little bit different than a traditional bar would, so if you think about, has anybody ever been to Worcester?
No.
Excellent, okay, so Shrewsbury Street is the epicenter of Worcester's, what they call Restaurant Row, and that's where we chose to move our new brewery to five years ago. And putting ourselves in that place, we actually surrounded our, our tap room very similar to what we would see at Patriot Place, with about twenty-seven local restaurants and bars. When we first moved in there, we had very limited hours, we only, we closed at seven o'clock originally, then what we found was people who were going to the local restaurants wanted a place to have a beer afterwards, and we were closed too early, and even the local restaurants said, boy, why are you, why are you closing so early? We think we could do a little bit better job capturing some of your guests, and we worked very hard to participate with the local businesses as good corporate citizens, to help them build their businesses, and I would, I'm very proud to say that of the twenty, it's twenty, depending on what day of the month you're, you're talking, there's twenty-two to twenty-seven restaurants there. I think there's only three who don't carry our beer regularly, and if you went and asked each and every one of those operators, with the exception of one, they would tell you that his, their, his or her business has actually grown in the five years that we've been there. We've worked on programs to participate in BYOF, and find ways to help them deliver food to our patrons on their busy nights, so that when they can't serve another meal, they have an opportunity to make a little bit of extra money. More importantly, we offer discounts at these local restaurants and partner with them to our guests, and when someone's had a beer, maybe traveled from Maine to come check out our brewery, or maybe traveled from the Cape or from Foxborough to Worcester, and said, hey, we're not from the area, and we'd love to go have your beer somewhere, and our staff is trained to say, what are you looking for for food? If it's Italian, here's a buy-one-get-one on pizza at this location, or if it's a sports bar, you're looking forward to catch the game, because we didn't have TVs in Worcester, then here's a great sports bar nearby that's, that's carrying our beers, and we really worked with, in partnership with the local restaurants, and it's pretty neat and something we're proud of, to have been able to accomplish that. As a tap room, again, limited hours, people don't really come to a tap room to sit and watch a Bruins game or a Patriots game for three or four hours. They come, they want to experience, they want to tour, they want to learn about beer, they want to learn something that they didn't understand and know before, and the most, the most patrons come and try flights, four-ounce samplings of beer, one, two, maybe four at a time, which equals a full serving, but they want to try something new, they want to learn about something, they want to understand something about the brewing process or ingredients that are used. For us, we're very proud of the fact that all of our beers include Massachusetts-grown ingredients. We do call that a piece of mass in every glass, and we contract with local farmers, something we'd be very excited about doing, even in this area. We've talked about a cranberry sour, because there's some active cranberry bogs right on the property, and we could have a lot of fun tying into it. In Worcester, we collab, we, we won an award from the Worcester Business Journal for what they called local collaboration. We work with local coffee shops, we work with, with local breadmakers, and we do things such as share our spent grains so that they can make bread or pizza dough that was derived from some of our ingredients that are part of the process of brewing and vice versa. We'll use local honey makers, honey in our beers, or maybe, you know, lemonade producers, that type of thing. We did a great, a great local collaboration with Dunkin' Donuts, obviously not Worcester-based, but Massachusetts-based. We did it before Harpoon, Harpoon stole that idea from us, and I go on record with that one. So collaboration and local community has been very, very, very important for us, and we take pride in that. From a staffing standpoint, we don't have bartenders, we have beer tenders. They have to pass rigorous training, obviously, what would include tips and safe server, you know, educational programs, but we also take it a step further, make sure they have to be able to understand beer. So there's a program called Cicerone Server Training, which means every, every person who works for us, whether they work in accounting or all the way through to serving beer, has to be able to talk intelligently about our beer, because that's really why we're there, is for educational purposes, and to be able to share the story of beer with them. Security would come certainly along that, we ID. I was very proud the other day, I was in our tap room, and I watched one of our servers turn somebody away who was clearly thirty years old, but he was a graduate school student at one of the colleges in Worcester, and he only had his passport, and passports aren't actually, I'm sorry, he didn't have his passport, he had college ID, and I watched our server ask for the passport and said, without a passport, we can't serve you here, and, and we had to shuffle that person off, but we take it very seriously. In an environment like Patriot Place, which is certainly busier, I would see us using wristbands to identify over-twenty-one consumers versus under-twenty-one consumers. That would bring the question, you know, why even allow over-twenty-one into a brewery? It's a huge part of tap room culture to see families enjoying a Saturday afternoon together with kids playing board games or chenga games. We have Hungry Hungry Hippo, which is my personal favorite, at our brewery in Worcester, Rock'em Sock'em Robots, but lots of things to keep the children entertained. We partnered with Polar to make sure that there's waters and locally-made juices and sodas for the kids to, to consume while they're there, and we just really like to engage that family environment to both local families, as well as families that are touring all over New England, bouncing from brewery to brewery while they, while they bring the family along with them. So that's really an interesting and fun part of being in the tap room business, is seeing that family and that community aspect. From a community standpoint, one of the things we're very proud of, the connection to local, I talked about, I talked a little bit about one of our awards, but charity is very important for us. On a day-to-day basis, everyone who visits our brewery and goes on a brewery tour, which we provide for free on Saturdays and Sundays, three times a day, are requi, are not required, are reminded at the end of the tour that if they would like to make a contribution to the local Worcester County Food Bank, or to the Worcester County Homeless Veteran Shelter, that we would make that donation, so we do accept donations for them, but we also take it steps further than that. We work often with charity groups who will rent out portions of our tap room, or our tap room in general, to do fundraisers for Boston Marathon events. We've just did a, a Boston Bruins event for Dana Farber two weekends ago, but I'm really proud of the fact that in January alone, we did four local charities that we did beers for. One was a firefighter, you guys are probably very familiar with Worcester who lost a firefighter this past January. We actually reached out to another local Worcester, Worcester County brewery in Waukesha, and we combined to brew, to brew a beer together. We donated one hundred percent of the revenue together for the, from that brew. We brought about fifteen hundred people through our tap room over the course of two days, and Wormtown's contribution to that family was twenty-four thousand dollars, and Waukesha's was thirty-three thousand dollars, something we think is pretty cool. We're very passionate about ALS, we brew an ALS beer every year, where we donate proceeds to ALS research and a number of other local charities, which we love to become a part of and involved in, and we'd see ourselves doing the same here as well. As we talk about local, we're familiar through, through Brian and some of the other people we've talked to in the industry about the Foxcares, and that would be something we would, we would want to be in contact with and also become a partner. I think we'd bring a little different perspective as a brewery, not just a, a restaurant or a bar that would be involved in a group like that, and that would be something very, we'd be very passionate about as well. I think I've covered most of what I would like to, I will forewarn, my wife has always called, told me that I can turn a five-minute story into a two-hour Walt Disney feature film, so she does call me Walt, and I could go on and on, but at this point in time, I'd love to handle questions that you guys may have for us about our brewery's history, or about how we see ourselves operating.
Board, any questions?
So as far as no food service, but you can bring food in if you want, is it similar to?
So in Worcester, ninety-five percent, that's correct. What we do do is we always offer these really cool collaborated pretzels, so you can get a pepperoni pizza pretzel or a Thanksgiving turkey pretzel, they're heated in a, in a warming oven, just to make sure we have something available. If someone's asking, we do something with local chip manufacturers, and we find farmers who do a lot of their own brining with pickles or relishes and beets, believe it or not, but it's very, very, very limited. BYOF is really the way we, we have operated in Worcester, and, you know, we see that being the way we operate moving forward.
And this week, a combined BYOF, but also ordering in from the restaurants at Patriot Place, and so all the menus will be available, you know, Patriot Place restaurants will all be available for delivery into the, the tap room, and, and we started doing that with the Battle Road concept in the fall, and it worked very, very well.
Yeah, okay. The other probably multi-part question is on the, the actual license itself, and where it's a brewery, and people can come in and, and buy cans, and you had mentioned the twenty-two or twenty-seven restaurants in Worcester carry your beer, so do you anticipate a high volume of, I'll call it retail stuff, and how do you get the beer to the other restaurants? I mean, there's deliveries?
That has to happen through distributor, nothing, what happens onsite ends up at any of the other establishments, that has to go through distributor.
Okay, so you would have to almost sell your beer to Quality or?
We do, and Quality happens to be our distribution partner in this area, both in Worcester and here.
You know people there?
I do. I know a few.
Probably you're right now in Patriot Place, I would assume.
We, yeah, we do. A number of restaurants have Wormtown.
And I'm probably not supposed to, you're never supposed to let someone know when you're a largest customer of a Patriot Place, past Waukesha Mountain in, in two thousand and eighteen as our largest customer in the state of Massachusetts, so we're very proud of that, and there are a handful of people already in Patriot Place who've been good customers for a long time, so, so we sell through distributor, they would then use their sales and delivery force to make sure that that beer gets delivered to those retail accounts. I think you're dancing a little bit around the idea of to-go sales, which is, obviously that's very different than a traditional restaurant, with the exception of wine, where you can take beer to go, but like a restaurant, we cannot sell open containers to go. That is very clear. One of the reasons we do not sell canned beer in our existing breweries, because if someone buys a four-pack, what's to stop them from popping that four-pack if we allowed cans to be sold? So if we saw someone drinking out of a can, we clearly know that they've now opened a can that was meant to be taken off-premise, so we can act as both an on- and off-premise retailer, but that would be a component, and it's a big part of beer tourism, especially in an environment like Patriot Place, where there's so many people who are not from the area, allowing them to take some flavors of Foxborough or Central Massachusetts, or, you know, or also some of the things we do in Worcester, or just the Massachusetts agribusiness in general, being able to take those flavors home to Green Bay, or to be able to bring that home with them to, we don't let, we don't let Giants fans or Jets fans buy our beer, definitely not Yankees fans, I hope there's nobody here who's a Yankees fan. But yeah, being able to let those people buy that beer and take it home with them after they've had an experience is, is part of, is part of the magic of it, and then brewing small-batch stuff that you can't get anywhere else, because we can't make enough of it, that is unique to this area and might be very unique to that location, would be pretty cool, too, to be able to let them do that.
Okay. This, you had mentioned the one, the brewery of in Worcester is twenty-seven thousand square feet?
Twenty-seven thousand square feet, correct.
What's the square footage of this lot, small?
Four thousand.
Just under, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, volume-wise, are you going to be producing a lot out of here for sale outside of the, the footprint of the building?
So given the, given the size of the space, obviously we'd be pretty limited with our production. We have, we have a deposit on what's known as a seven-barrel brewing system, so that's a brewer barrel, which means fourteen kegs, basically, so every time we would brew, we have the ability to make fourteen kegs of beer, that's pretty limited. Most of the production of the mainstream beers, like Be Hoppy, which most people would know, would come from Worcester to keep consistency and quality standards, but what we don't have in Worcester, and we've been missing since the brewery originally started, is what's known as a pilot beer system, or if you thought about it from a, from a cooking standpoint, what you'd call a test kitchen. The ability to make small prepped items and sample it and try it with people for the first time, and that's really what this brewery would, that's what, I'm actually getting chills right now, because of the creativity for our staff to be able to come here and do things we haven't done in a long time, or do things we've never done before, and invent and create and inspire in this location that we may then take and scale up to another location, is, is really exciting, and it's a big missing component to our brewery. We've looked throughout New England at other opportunities to do this, and this is the very first time that we find they said, no, no, we, we've found the right home to go ahead and, and introduce our brand and start having some of that fun creative experience for our brewers.
I know you explained to us the last time you were here, you know, the process, the federal process, did you have to start that all over again, once it?
We did, because it's a new applicant, so we're in the, it's in, we're just waiting for that approval now, and as soon as we get that, we can, we can proceed with this state permit simultaneously with the pouring permit, and the ABCC has gotten the heads up that those will come at the same time, which is helpful to them as well.
So, so you're looking really just to pour your product from Worcester until you're able to brew your own in Foxborough?
That would be correct.
Well, actually, they're not going to pour anything until their brewery is, is finished, which would be sometime this summer, so they, they will, the, the key to tonight's decision is that they will then start construction of the brewery system effectively tomorrow, if we are successful here, and then there's, there's about a two-and-a-half-month process to get that done, so there's not going to be anything happening at the location until the brewery is complete, so they're producing and serving. So they're producing and serving.
Which, by that time too, we anticipate TTB and state to be approved.
So you're totally renovating?
Not renovating, just that there's no brewery system there today. That, the, the, back when we were doing the Battle Road program, all of the beer came from their Maynard facility, and we were like, you know, the taps were ready and everything was, was fine with that. But this is to start the actual construction of the brewery that's going to be here and producing the beer here, and nothing will be opened to the public until that brewery's completed.
The other two components.
Mr. Chairman, just so, so I think what, what's, what they, what made sense to us was that they start this process, get this in, in motion at the same time they apply for their other licenses, so that we don't end up with a, a two-month delay that gets added on to that process. So we wouldn't, the board, if, if you're so inclined to approve it tonight, would, would not effectively issue the license until they, and they actually receive their state license.
The other two licenses.
Right.
The other two licenses. So we'll effectively hold that in abeyance until we actually have those licenses in hand. Okay, so just one comment that I had, and we just received your, your designs today for the, for the facility. So one comment that, that we, that our building is about to have to me, I wanted to convey to you tonight, is that you have an entrance where it comes into the center of the facility, and you have your outdoor seating facilities on each side of that entrance. All right, one of the concerns is that you have a separate entrance that comes in so that you don't have people walking in that are sitting on either side of that on the outside of the building. So I wonder if you can actually address that and change that, that design? I think that would be much more, more powerful to us. I think it, it, I think architecturally should be able to be done.
Yeah.
I just want, I just want to make sure you don't have people walking in and people drinking on both sides of that, so that people don't have an opportunity to walk out of the building unabated.
Understood.
Okay. So I couldn't get to that, but I just, I came in late Saturday, so we want to make sure we get that to you tonight.
Any other questions from the board?
So according, according to your, your floor plan, you're going to have seating for roughly 75 people?
Seating for 75, we worked with, excuse me, we worked with Coell Architects who are based here in Foxborough, and as they built out this seating chart, one thing we did do is we expanded the bathrooms in this plan, and they're the experts, but they believe that based on the bathroom access that we're providing, that this would have a capacity of 176 people, given town bylaws. So the seating is, if that's the count, but we're, we're looking to do 176-person capacity.
Just to clarify on the seating, since, since the time of completing the application that you received to Coell amending the floor plan, there's been a slight increase to 101 seats inside.
Okay, because the application said 75.
75, right.
And, and both bathrooms are being upgraded for ADA compliance.
Correct.
So I think the application should be amended.
Any other questions?
Last time, we didn't really get into the brewing discussion because it just wasn't on the table, so are there any downstream impacts for us to think about? Water, sewer, I don't know if you guys are on your own systems, that, you know, what else do we need to think about with this being the first one?
Certainly, I mean, I, Brian's operations team understands how they're, they manage their wastewater, and it's pretty impressive.
It's a very clean process. We also went through the vigorous analysis of the, of any of their wastewater products in terms of going into the wastewater treatment plant, and there are zero issues. I mean, actually, believe it or not, the, the components coming out of the brewery process will actually help our wastewater treatment plant as opposed to work against it.
You will, if you research or read some issues where breweries have had problems in Worcester in particular, we've, they've probably come out two or three times, and they've always said, you know, you guys, you guys are doing this the right way, and we, what you're providing us with is helpful to, to the system. What Patriot Place has for system is one of the most impressive wastewater treatment plants I've ever seen. So we've worked in conjunction and had hours of meetings with his team to make sure we understand the impact of what we do and how to, what we call side stream, to help mitigate any issues. One of the cool things for us is, all breweries are like this, but we're very, very, very conscious of especially water usage, and we put a lot of processes in place to make sure that we can help mitigate it, because it does take a lot of water. It's about five gallons of water per gallon of beer produced that it takes between cleaning processes, et cetera. Now, but we do fun reusable things. Our spent grain actually feeds cows and cattle, pigs in the area that then also becomes compost. We have a system where we take the heat that's generated from our brewing system, and we use that, we regenerate that to heat the actual water that we use to start the brewing process. So we, we've had some really fun ways to be more environmentally sensitive, especially when it comes to water. No farm, no water, no beers.
So no impacts, kind of that Worcester didn't think of down the road to brewing?
No, Worcester, Worcester's been great, and, and they love what we're doing, so.
So Chairman, is, can you just clarify, David, the, this is a, a satellite location for this particular located brewery? So the, the main brewery itself will remain in Worcester, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So this will be a smaller operation, downsized to, to fit this particular location?
Correct.
I think you said 14 kegs, right? 14 kegs?
It's, it's what's known as a seven-barrel system at the brewery in Worcester. We have an oversized 30, so produces about 40 barrels of beer.
A day, or what are we talking?
Oh, no, we, we, just for quantification purposes, we brew, so we're moving to 180 barrels of beer a day in Worcester, and over the course of a year, that'll leave us at about 33, 34,000 barrels of beer produced. It's a lot of keg stands.
In, in contrast, what does, how, how does that work with this site? How many, how much will you produce?
So it's, it's hard to tell early on. Our initial estimates are that we would have somebody onsite brewing twice a day. In the course of a day, a brewer could get as many as 14 barrels out in a day, and, but we expect it to be in general, early on, about 14 barrels brewed a week, and then we'll see what happens from there. That's still more than we produced at our original brewery the first year.
That's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions?
One of the things, and actually, this doesn't really pertain to them, but we do, I noticed one of him's emails, there's no permit fee.
There's no set fee for this, because it's brand-new.
Yeah.
So, so one of the recommendations that, we did a survey to see, you know, where people are with, with these permits. They range from anywhere from 350 to 1,000. I think we, we settled, I'm talking to the chairman, we looked at, the, the amount was with $500 in Worcester for the permit, so.
Which I believe was consistent with their regular on-premise licensing. I, I think that's where most municipalities fall.
So should that be part of our motion to a separate motion?
That would be the recommendation that, you know, you could, you can make as part of the, I would, I would think you'd take that as a separate action, and then just, and then take the license as a separate, or the pouring license as a...
But it was the same as, 500 was the same as Worcester.
And what's our normal license fee?
We don't have one.
No, no, what's our normal license fee?
For an on-premise for a restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like 250, yeah.
So I guess we'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the...
Public hearing.
Apologize, thank you very much. My first day is... His first day is quite... Move, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. I totally forgot about that.
Up to you.
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Motion to approve application for farmer series pouring permit for Wormtown Brewery LLC doing business as Wormtown Brewery contingent upon the issuance of a permit from the state.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to approve application for common vituress license for Wormtown Brewery LLC doing business as Wormtown Brewery.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to approve application for seven-day entertainment license for Wormtown Brewery LLC doing business as Wormtown Brewery.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just to add to, to the record, so that the license itself would not be issued until they, they receive their state, or federal, is it federal license or state license?
Federal, and then the pouring permit application will go up simultaneously with the state application to the ABCC.
Great, thank you.
And then should we make a motion to charge for the permit?
To, to set the, the fee for a 19C license at the, the amount of $500.
Make a motion, the issuance of a 19C license to be $500 annually.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, quick explanation though, why do they call Worcester Wormtown? I've never heard that before.
Again, Walt Disney, so the quick explanation might take a couple minutes. City of Worcester in the late 70s, early 80s had five or six really cool live music venues. A couple of them are still in existence today, but they were the traditional bars that if I drove you by them, they have a door and two slot windows, and if I asked you if you wanted to go and have a drink, you'd say, no, thank you. But during that time period, Boston's music scene was very prominent. You had Jay Giles' man from Worcester playing in these clubs, Aerosmith was coming and playing in these clubs, Boston was coming and playing in these clubs. The Rolling Stones played their second North American tour stop ever in one of these clubs, and it moved into a punk scene for years, it moved to a hip-hop scene for a number of years, and someone had written an article about the only people who knew of this great incredible music scene were the people who followed it underground from bar to bar to bar like worms, and hence it became Wormtown from there. For us, it was Worcester Brewing Company, which nobody could say, or Wormtown, which would at least bring them to ask a question, which allowed us to tell a little bit about us, and it helped create kind of an image and a DNA, if you will, of our brand. Kind of, I'm sorry, but we're off on this now, but Be Hoppy, local reference, the smiley face and have a nice day, was not a Forrest Gump creation. It was actually a gentleman by the name of Harvey Ball, who was an ad agency executive in Worcester. He was asked to draw an employee morale campaign for a local company that had made an acquisition to help soothe their new employees. He drew it up, I believe he got paid $37, and it was 19, 1957 or 1967, never trademarked it. So we have his grandchildren on a permanent free beer status. They're of 20, they're of age. But even like Bottle Rocket, Dr. Robert Goddard, so it's our tribute to Dr. Goddard, and then, and you know, it speaks to that. We have a beer that we used to brew called Blonde Cougar, which we no longer make, but I'm a, I'm a board of trustee at the Ecotarium in Worcester, and we just brought in two Mountain Lion Cubs to the old Polar Bear exhibit that we had at, at the Worcester Science Museum back then, and we're going to release, we're going to re-release Cougar, the same beer. Yeah, Cougar, because Mountain Lion and Cougar are the same species, depending on where you are in the country, and we'll do a portion of the proceeds for that, to help just co-market that they brought these two beautiful animals to the, to their, to their habitat, and, and allow them to raise some money for the venue. So it's, it's fun to just do local Worcester things like that.
And now we know why your wife calls you Walt.
Why can't you call? But I look forward to learning those stories and those histories here and be able to find fun ways to do that as well.
What's scary, Mr. Chairman, is I actually used to frequent some of those clubs in Worcester when I were growing up, Sir Morgan's Cove.
Oh, yeah.
Probably one of, that's a place where the, where the Rolling Stones actually played.
They unfortunately just closed after all this time.
Isn't it true that the first Keegan vehicle was purchased at the site?
It could very well be true, yes.
Another, another fun fact for us, and a thing we're proud of with Worcester, we were named the Worcester Red Sox official brewery. So when they open at Polar Bear, which is right next to Sir Morgan's Cove.
Exactly right.
We'll be the official brewery of the Worcester Red Sox, maybe someday the Patriots.
That's great, there we go.
Not for you to worry about. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Big night venue.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye. But again, I think we have a public meeting, right? Not unless one. Oh, fancy seeing you here.
I am.
All right, you're up.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Kristen Scanlon again, representing the licensee with me this evening, and seated to my right is the proposed manager of record, Brian Sundet. The primary reason for this change is because Mr. Murray, who was previously named manager, has left the company. But by way of introduction, Mr. Sundet is a retired Marine. He's also been in the restaurant industry since then, since about 2001. He's been with Scorpion Bar at Patriot Place for about 10 months, and he is in a role of manager there now, and spends approximately 55 to 60 hours per week there. He is tips trained and certified, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them about his experience.
Great. Any questions from the board? Prior to starting at this location, could you give us some indication of your track record within the...
I spent 12 years with Jillian's Lucky Strike right next to Fenway Park in Boston, a very large venue, very sports-oriented, so it was kind of a natural progression to come down to Patriot's Place, which falls probably my favorite sport. The Big Night has been great to me, and I love working for them.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions from the board?
Everything on the app looks good.
All right. Motion to approve Big Night venues, Foxborough LLC doing business as Scorpion Bar and Mexican Cantina, application for change of manager to Brian Sundet.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I just have to recuse myself because I bought an auction item that they donated. I actually saw Brian when I was just in there last, last night, and I just didn't have time to do my 23B before I got here, coming off the plane, so I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, great, thank you for doing that. So four, zero, one recuse. Great.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck, we'll see you up there. All right, last item. Yeah, it's a, a discussion on, on, on a further parking on, if you remember, two weeks ago, we were talking about extend, expanding the policy and changing the language a little bit, make it more wide open. We had a copy of that in our, our packet, and what are your thoughts?
Did all of the existing lot owners receive this?
We sent it out, we sent it out, unfortunately, we couldn't get it out until late, later last week, but everybody did receive it. I sent, we actually sent it to Mike Stanton, who was, who agreed to send it out to everyone. So, and he did do that. So I know that they've actually met, and they do have some questions about it, that they, they questioned some of the language in it. So one of the things that was recommended to me was that we have a, a subcommittee group get together and then talk about this, so that we can then bring something back that we essentially all could, could agree on, because there was some, there was a, a good discussion of the language, but there was still some disagreement about, you know, what that, what that meant and how it applies.
So who would you suggest be on that subcommittee?
Well, I would, I would think certainly the, the applicant who's here tonight would certainly want to have part, participate in that discussion, as well as certainly members from other Route One business and the police chief. And I know Chief O'Leary had participated in this before, perhaps he could participate in this as well, for as a member of the board, since he's familiar with the issue, most familiar with the issue.
Sounds like a great idea, seeing as how there's, people want to input more into the process, so.
I think having everybody around the table to discuss it will, will kick around the, the various pluses and minuses of each thing, that way, there's no, there's no surprises to anybody, that, you know, certainly we'll have a dialogue and see what, what it yields.
Do we have the time to do that?
I think, well, I, my recommendation is we get going on as soon as possible, because I know the season's coming up upon us quickly.
Would you be amenable to being on the...
Absolutely. Can I just ask a question about the letter that's in here? Are they in the same situation as Ms. Santos, or is that just a letter that's kind of unrelated, just with a change of parking from someone over one?
I would take it as unrelated, just to, for your information.
Okay, they, they're not in the same sidewalk situation or anything?
We bought the building, it has a side, I'm pretty sure it has a sidewalk. I think they're just saying, hey, we're new here, and we're knocking it. Sounds like they're not going to be parking this year, but they want to continue to park once they finish renovations. That's the way I read it.
So would you coordinate that?
Certainly will, certainly will.
Yeah, I would say time is kind of the essence, just to get it done and wrapped up.
I think it'd be best if, if we, if we agree on something, we can bring it back, and then if, if representatives from the Route One businesses and certainly Ms. Santos would be here, we can agree on something and... can agree on something and maybe get it resolved that way.
Do we, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but do we think that they will agree putting that onto the business owners? So, we've had a public hearing, we've met a couple times, we've got revised language from town council. You know, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate for what is this next step going to do? Are we going to have town council there?
Well, town council didn't actually, didn't actually draft that for initially, I think they think the chief.
Yeah, but she weighed in.
She weighed in on it, she did, she did weigh in on it. So, the question then is, is whether or not that will yield, I think there's disagreement from some of the members on Route One about it. So, I think I, what we want to try is clear up some of the, some of the concerns about it and address it, so that we bring it back and everybody's in full agreement about it.
I think one of the other concerns is, has it affect existing permit holders?
Right, we need to clarify some of those things.
So, it's really two issues, you know, revamping our policy and then Ms. Santos.
And also, and it's also consistent with how it's been done in the past, as I understand it, correct?
Yes.
And so, it has been, it was done this way in the previous way, it's, we haven't addressed it, it's been over five years. So, I think this is the way it was done before, let's follow that same process.
Yeah, I guess just being new to it, it seems like there's a lot of meetings, and, you know, what is our end goal, and what is our timeline, just so that some, like, I would hate for a deadline to pass, and then, you know, 10 days later, something to be approved. And obviously, from my stance, it was clear that there's two different very feeling, two different sets of feelings on this, so, you know, I just want to make sure this doesn't get dragged on to another two, three, four meetings.
It's not my intention to do that. My intention was just to, was to try and understand everybody's concerns and issues and try and draw, and try and reach a resolution fairly quickly. If it can't be resolved, I'll come back to you and tell you that. So, and then you'll have to decide if how you want to proceed.
Okay, great, so we'll.
So, I will try and schedule something if I can by, as early as next week.
So, did we ball and told Ed, or did he agree?
No, I'll anticipate, I have the flexibility in my schedule.
I don't want them bullying you.
Probably the most of anybody right there. So, I think, so my goal was to be, get, move this quickly, because I know it, the season's coming up, and we want to try and address that. The other, the other question that was legitimately set at this last meeting though, was that it was represented by several members of the, of the, of the Route One business owners who actually have parking lots, and I've heard this from several people now, is that there is a different kind of demand for parking right now than there has been in other years. And that's because the world has changed. The world has changed because we now have Uber and Lyft, and there was few people that are actually demanding parking for, along Route One. So, I, while I understand the need of Ms. Santos here, it also is a legitimate point that not all the businesses are actually selling out their parking lots anymore. So, I think the board itself has to wrestle with the fact of whether or not you want to have additional people selling spaces, or is that, or is that necessary? But I think with due respect to your concern, is that, that's something we, I want to have a better understanding of, because that's been said by several people, and I think.
And I actually reached out to Jess about that after our meeting, because that kind of struck me, I was like, wow.
Yeah.
They're not selling out parking. So, Jess and I did talk, and I asked her that specific question, and she said that it is true that they have not sold out parking in recent years, and some of what they're doing is actually to scale back seating, because that's kind of where the stadium's going.
Right.
But then on the flip side, you know, thinking of it, while they may not sell out, people may want to park further, or they may want to have easy ingress, so.
Well, one of the reasons why you have lots that park illegally on North Street is because people know that if they're parked in the core area and they're in the back, they're there for an additional two hours potentially, with the traffic conditions. One accident will crash on Route One, and it brings everything almost to a grinding halt.
Right.
Your particular lot, because of access to 115, to 1A, would be very optional for people that are willing to either park at the Lafayette House or seasonal specialty and walk that far just to have access out.
But Jess did confirm that. I can share the email with Amanda, maybe you can put it in board docs or something, but she did confirm that statement.
So, to be clear about the timeline here, you're, this is on your agenda for June 11th for renewal of the licenses, so you want to be sure that you have the ability to deal with it. So, that's why moving on it next week is a premium consideration.
Email me in when you meet, if I'm around, I'd like to go to the meeting too.
Ms. Santos?
I just want to make a comment that if this license is so important to me, yes, the parking has been scaled back over the years. If I have more than 10 cars in my yard, I'm subject to a fine. If I have more than five relatives, I work for a large company, people constantly ask me, friends, family. So, if I don't have a license, I'm subject to a fine every time there's more than 10 cars in my yard. So, that's another why, reason why it's really important for me to obtain that license.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Great.
You'll be emailed in or CC.
We'll be sending it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do that, good.
Did I miss anything? Did we accomplish everything?
I think so.
We went out of order, but I think we got there. But we got there, so we'll, we'll make a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting to the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Night, everybody.
All right, good night.